I'd like to call it over the Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Weber? Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Jalazinski?
Here.
Commissioner Engler?
Here.
Commissioner Moreno?
Here.
Commissioner Swainy?
Here.
Commissioner Hope? All present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we got approval of the agenda. We'll do general public comment on agenda items only. We have no presentations or special reports. We have no appointments to boards and commission. We'll do the consent agenda. We'll do the committee reports. We have nine items, I believe. We have no intergovernmental affairs. Well, the administrators, the controllers. No unfinished business, no new business. We'll open it up for general public comment again on any topic. We'll do announcements or views from the board, and then we'll do an adjournment. Are there any corrections or additions that needs to be added at this time?
Adoption of the agenda as presented.
Support.
The move by Jalazinski, supported by Hope, in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Hey, at this time, I'd like to open up to general public comment. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. Hey, is there anybody online? So at this time, we're going to close general public comment on agenda items. There'll be another opportunity to make comments on any topic at the end of the meeting. Okay, let's move right into the consent agenda. So let's start with Commissioner Jalazinski.
And with the Finance Committee of the Hall, number one is...
Nope, we need to do the consent agenda.
The consent agenda. Motion reads, move to approve and place on file the November 18, 2025 regular meeting minutes and the November 25, 2025 Finance Committee Committee of the Hall minutes.
Support.
The move by Jalazinski, supported by Swainy?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one thing that we should correct. On the November 18 regular meeting minutes, I don't know if you want to pull that from the consent agenda or if you want to just...
What, is it a material or is it?
Um, well, item five, where they're talking about the Reamer Plumbing quote to replace three boilers. It says, "This request came in as an emergency, so it did have to go out for bids according to the purchasing policy."
There were actually three bids that were done on that. It wasn't in the packet. So when I said that it was an emergency, but there was also three bids done as well.
Oh, there was?
Yes.
Okay.
And he didn't put them in the packet, but I verified with Steve after the meeting that three bids were done on that item. So I stand corrected on that. I got, there was another issue with another boiler and another location, and I got the two mixed up when I verbally spoke on that. I do apologize.
Good catch by both of you, so. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? Seeing none, in favor of that, signify by aye?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Swainy, you want to start us off, and Mr. Weber, you didn't get to do this one.
All right, for the start of the Finance Committee Committee of the Hall, number one, November 14, 2025 invoice list, November 21, 2025 invoice list, and the November 13, 2025 adjustments list. Motion reads, move to ratify and place on file the November 14, 2025 invoice list in the amount of $348,977.73. The November 21, 2025 invoice list in the amount of $247,584.53. The adjustments list date November 13, 2025.
Support. The move by Swainy, supported by Jalazinski. Want to start us off with the discussion on the November 14?
Yes, sir. This was sent out prior to last week's board meeting to all the commissioners so they can review in advance, and if they got any questions, to let us know. This top page has all the invoices that are over $5,000. And out of the total invoice amount of $348,977.73, the general fund portion is $43,720.69. And what you'll see on this cover sheet is that there's a lot that it's GLBRMW. And for those that aren't familiar with it, that is Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works, and which we are now the fiduciary for, so all the invoices will come through this board for payment. So there's a lot of October and November and December rents for their various locations throughout the five county area. And then we also have Preston Community Services for the equalization contract of $19,375 as a part of this list as well.
Excuse me, any questions? Okay, let's do the November 21st.
The November 21st list has a total amount of $247,584.53. And the general fund portion out of this is $12,872.16. So we have two proceeds from foreclosures from the Treasurer's Office. We have day treatment monthly contract for the trial court of $44,720. And then we have $8,574.89 to advance benefit solutions for monthly international and 90-day prescriptions.
Okay, any questions on that list? Okay, seeing none, let's do the adjustment list for November 13.
On the adjustment list is the ones that will hit this are either errors that were made and corrected or invoices that were added to avoid late fees or to get early payment discounts. And so you'll see on here, you have the traditional Goran Food Service. We've got a couple to the City of Mount Pleasant. We do have two to Broadway Land Management for to pay, to catch up for additional leased space in which the Prosecutor's Office needed at that location. So that was just to make that all whole.
Okay, any questions on the adjustment list? Any questions on the entirety of the list? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Jalazinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Weber, you want to take the next item?
Ambulance service agreement. Motion reads, move to approve the ambulance service agreement between Isabella County and Mobile Medical Response Incorporated in effective January 1, 2026 until December 31, 2030, and authorize the board chairperson and the county clerk to sign the same.
Support. It's been moved by Weber, supported by Jalazinski, discussion.
Sure, the contract is pretty much the same one that we've had for the last number of years. It's a five-year contract. Some of the items in here that have remained the same is basically the contractor agrees to have a 10-minute or 59, 10-minute, 59 seconds or less, 80% of the time for Area A, which would be the City of Mount Pleasant and Union Township. And then there's a 14-minute and 59-second or less, 80% of the time on the remaining of the county. I do get reports on these on a regular basis now, and I've had a nice conversation with Brett on this. And so we're on the same page as far as getting these reports and everything, so it's working out very well. And I want to do point out to everybody out there that this is not any taxpayer dollars being utilized on this. There's no general fund monies. It's just all exclusive services, contract for MMR and for them to service the residents of Isabella County.
Question, yes.
I was surprised to find that we're 27 years now, been approving this contract, and it's paid from Medicare, Medicaid funds, probably insurance dollars that come in. But I don't believe, it wasn't said this year, but I think it's said in previous years that if somebody didn't have the means to pay, they would not be refused service. So it's been a really good service, and it's been an economical way to do it in the county.
Another thing that's really nice with our location here, and that they service Clare and Grasset Counties, is that if there's a lot of internal calls for Isabella County, they can roll one rig from another site down. So there's a lot of coverage just beyond what station in the county. If need be, they can roll additional rigs from Grasset and Clare up as well, which really makes us a really nice deal for the county.
Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jalazinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Hope, you want to?
Sure. Item 3, Community Corrections Fiscal Year 2026 Grant Award. Motion reads, move to approve community corrections fiscal year 2026 grant award between Isabella County and the Michigan Department of Corrections in the amount of $123,125. And authorize board chairperson to sign the same.
Support. It's been moved by Hope, supported by Moreno, discussion?
So this is a grant from the state, and the court uses this money to provide treatment programming for men's treatment groups, drug testing, monitoring, and drug testing, pretrial assessments, opiate and methamphetamine programs for those that qualify. It's $4,508 less than last year, but as Kerry Curtis explained, they'll be able to deal with that.
That's because they didn't offer the interlock program because they didn't have enough participants. Or questions? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Jalazinski?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber? Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campbell, you want to grab the next agreement?
Yes. Fiscal Year 26 TriCap Agreement for Services. Move to approve the Fiscal Year 26 Agreement for Services between Isabella County and the Tri-County Community Adjudication Program. TriCap in the amount not to exceed $36,890, and authorize the board chairperson to sign the same.
Support. Been moved by Campbell, supported by Moreno, discussion. You want to take this one, pretty?
Yeah, this one right, yeah, it's very straightforward on getting money for evidence-based and best practice approved for the goals and changing of behavioral patterns. So it just helps with group counseling and other things that are related to the court system, namely on the opioid and meth programs.
Okay, any more questions?
Just going to say it's a pretty intensive pathway through those with opioid and methamphetamine abuse who are at high risk of repeating.
Okay. Anybody else, yes.
TriCap provides the services, but there's always some out-of-pocket costs that a lot of people can't afford. So this grant picks up those costs, so it's a good thing. Nobody's denied because they can't afford transportation and some of these other costs.
Okay, any more comments? Let's proceed with the vote.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jalazinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Moreno, you want to take the loader?
Sure. John Deere 554P Wheel Loader. The motion reads, move to approve the purchase of a John Deere 554P Wheel Loader at the cost of $258,529.44 using 2% funds, which would then be submitted for reimbursement back to the tribal 2% individual program awards under the terms of the contract agreement with the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe regarding the EPA infrastructure grant, and authorize the board chairperson to sign the same.
Support. Moved by Moreno, supported by Weber, discussion. Let me take, I'll take this one. Basically, it's to buy the loader tractor. It was our partners with the Chippewa Indian Tribes have been a good one. This is actually came through an EPA grant. It's not your normal 2% money. So the tribe's been very generous in switching that over. So a piece of equipment purchased through that grant already, so that money is available. Commissioner.
My wife pays attention to social media. I mean, not so much. But I know there's one social media, I think, Take Back Isabella County. There's a lot of discussion, a lot of confusion on this. They think it's like 2% monies. This is a tribal EPA grant that is available to the county, being passed to the county. And because we don't have a lot of surplus funds with the MRF, we use the tribal 2% money on a temporary basis to make those acquisitions, which then is replaced once the reimbursement's made. So I mean, you can argue all day if the federal government should be giving out dollars that it doesn't have to give out, but it's going to be used by one level of government or another. And if it can benefit the county, I think it's great that the tribe asks for those dollars, and it's certainly going to be beneficial to the MRF without costs to the county.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, let's proceed to vote.
Commissioner Jalazinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope? Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jalazinski, you want to take the next item?
Lease Agreement Between Broadway Land Management LLC and Isabella County. Motion reads, move to approve the lease agreement between Broadway Land Management LLC and Isabella County for a one-year term beginning November 19, 2025 through November 19, 2026, and authorize the board chairperson to sign the same.
Support. Been moved by Jalazinski, supported by Swainy?
So this is a continuation of the lease on Broadway. I think the building used to belong to Isabella Bank, but it houses our prosecuting attorney's offices, and it's just a renewal for one year. And I think the increase in the amount of the rent is about 5%. But it continues that until we can adequately house our own offices within the administration building.
And this one does include both locations, where the previous one, we had one original contract, then another contract for another location. This one includes both, both locations.
Okay, any more comments? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope? Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jalazinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, Commissioner Swainy?
Number seven, contract with Isabella County Fiscal Agent for Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works and Cindy Van Sumerun. Motion reads, move to approve the contract between County of Isabella as a fiscal agent for Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works and Cindy Van Sumerun for case management services beginning 10/1/2025 through 9/30/2026, and authorize board chairperson to sign the same.
Support. Been moved by Swainy, supported by Jalazinski, discussion. You want to take the call?
Since we're the fiduciary for Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works, we will, you know, handle any contracts with employees or contract workers. So we're just working this through for them. Costs go to Great Lakes Bay. And then we incur money back to us for administering it.
There was two bidders on the RFP, so Cindy scored the highest, so it was the best candidate.
This, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And this was also, and here it is noted, that it was approved by the joint, Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works Joint Board. Did approve this as well.
Just a quick question. I know on the invoice list, you have Great Lakes Bay R Michigan Works. Is that Great Lakes Bay region? Michigan Works?
Yeah, and that should probably be corrected. That's a good catch. So it should just, the R should be taken out of that. So the actual monitor, it's not Great Lakes Bay Michigan region. So yes, that R should be taken out of that invoice. So, thank you.
Does the, let me see, does the person that made the motion and seconded agree with taking that out?
No, this one is correct.
Just in the future.
It was just on the invoice, so in the future, the notice will be correctly stated on that list.
Okay.
I get bothered by the little details.
Pick that extra letter out of that acronym.
Okay, more discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Jalazinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Weber?
Budget Amendment 2026-05BLC. Move to approve the, move to approve approving budget amendment 2026-05BLC for fund 519-PA 123 attorney fees, and authorize the board chairperson to sign the same.
Support. Been moved by Weber, supported by Swainy? Discussion, you want to?
Yeah, so as explained by Treasurer Schaefer, this last week, the use of fund balances to increase for attorney fees for the processing of the MCL 211-78T claims that comes through. And so this is specifically related to those ongoing claims that are processed through the foreclosure process. And so this is just more attorney fees for that. Am I correct on that? Thank you.
I just think there's been a lot more activity than
Yes, sir.
that happened. So it's just, just taking care of business, so. Any more discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jalazinski? Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I didn't figure this out. Commissioner Hope, you want to take this one?
Sure. Number nine, removal of long-term advance. Motion reads, move to approve the removal of the long-term advance from the general fund to the drain revolving fund in the amount of $150,000, and to reclassify the original 2020 transaction as a permanent use of general fund, unassigned fund balance, consistent with the Drain Commissioners 821-2020.
Support. Been moved by Hope, supported by Jalazinski. Since you did a lot of work on it, you want to start us off?
Yeah, so this generated quite a bit of discussion in a committee meeting last week. So I went back and looked at, I could not find administration committee video that took place prior to that work session. But I did find the video, the YouTube video from Zoom from 9/1/2020 from the work session. And it was referenced back to the committee, kind of gave us a little bit of idea of what happened there. And it was a long meeting. There was a budget presentation. But if you go to 1 hour and 45 minutes, this particular item was presented by Commissioner Horton. And it was considered approved if bands due to, due from, from general fund to drain revolving fund designated as working capital for a term not longer than five years. And then Nicole Frost, who I think at that time was acting as administrator. I think Margaret was out on leave at that, at that time. Yes, Nicole, she said, "We're asking for $150,000," correct? And she replied, "That is correct." The original request asked for a transfer for working capital because their costs have increased. But in committee, what we actually came to un- back to the general fund after a certain length of time from the drain revolving fund. And then Commissioner Horton asked if Drain Commissioner Willoughby was on the call. He chimed in, "Yeah, I'm here." And then Commissioner Horton said disallow- Some control over it from the county commission, but still helps the Drain Commission with the daily operating costs. Commissioner Engler chimed in, asked what the drain revolving fund balance was. Commissioner Willoughby said $267,000. Commissioner Engler asked if that was with the $150,000. And Mr. Willoughby said yes. He went on to explain that costs for pipe and everything had increased. Talked about how previous Drain Commissioners got in advance in 2004, 2005, which would have been 15 years prior. And then Mr. Willoughby went on to say that costs keep going up and up and up. So he was, the Drain Commissioner was involved in that discussion at the work session. Commissioner Horton asked if there was backlog in maintenance. And Mr. Willoughby replied, "Not right now, but we're getting low on money." So like I say, Drain Commissioner Willoughby was a part of that conversation in which Administrator Frost clearly stated that the money would be paid back to the general fund from the drain revolving fund. And then in the regular session, I presented that item as a younger, less gray-haired version of myself. But as discussed and is reiterated by Commissioner Willoughby, maintenance costs have increased to the point where the drain revolving fund has insufficient funds to meet the needs and is starting to put some delays. So they need a boost of revenue in that fund. And originally, in- And originally in committee, we looked at a transfer out from general fund. But what I, but what we came up with, which I think is a better idea, is this due to do from where the money comes out of the unassigned fund balance and is restored to the, um, unassigned fund balance. Online agendas of minutes, uh, the YouTube recordings don't go back past 2020, so we kind of lucked out there. We had just started that practice. But it's clear if you watch those that the intention was for the money to be paid back to the general fund during that term of five years. Uh, it was also clear that the drain commissioner was part of that discussion and should have understood those terms. Um, maybe in the meantime, both parties had forgotten, uh, not suggesting there was any deception uh, by anyone. I just think the intent was forgotten by both parties. Um, but it was intended as a loan. So Commissioner Swainy, thank you for raising questions at the committee meeting last week. Kind of prompted me to go back and look at that, so. Um, since it was intended as a loan, I'm going to vote no on this.
Go ahead. I'll save my comments.
So I, I know it came up in the committee discussion about the loan and I, we don't, as commissioners, we don't know, you know, how that revolving, uh, or that loan fund works. It's supposed to be a capital, capital available to the drain commissioner to do these, do these projects because you don't get the assessment right, right away. And if you don't have the working capital, you can't do the jo-, uh, do the job. You have to put things off. And I think we've heard from our, uh, finance, uh, director that this is not something we're going to recover as much as we'd want to. It's just not a recoverable loan, uh, that the drain commissioner is going to continue to need those dollars to, to do the work on the, uh, on the drains. I mean, we can disapprove it, leave it all in limbo. Let, let the, uh, finance director keep juggling the books with it. Or we can go ahead and approve it and, you know, end it so that the drain commissioner has the funds needed. Until such time as inflation comes up or work comes up and there's a shortage of funds, it'll probably come to us again. But I think at this point, uh, I would think the, uh, director of finance would know, you know, the coming and going of those dollars. And so I intend to vote in approval for this.
Swainy?
Um, I had a couple of constituents come to me, um, suggesting that they didn't believe the drain commission was assessing maintenance fees on a yearly basis. Um, I really don't have the accounting for that and I, and I'm not even sure, uh, how that process is done. So I'd, I'd love to hear, um, either administration or, or Engler on that view before I make further comment.
Okay, the drain code needs probably be updated, but to open that code up could, did, uh, uh, subject it to a lot of changes, so. And I could tell you, yes, that the maintenance fees are being assessed, uh, because I look at my tax bill.
On a yearly basis for?
Uh, pretty much, yeah. It's such a low amount that doesn't allow them to do a lot. I mean, if they had to actually, they do a minor fix that might fit in there. It also depends on how big the drain district is because it spreads it out, so. But as far as the maintenance, uh, if you know anything about the drains, that a lot of the maintenance, there's just not enough money for, as far as like mowing, keeping trees out of the, where the, uh, county drains go through and the roots get into the, those need to be maintained. They try to do as much as possible, but unless they change the drain code, that's not, you know, it's really, has not kept up with the cost of everything as far as getting excavators out to do that work, so. Yeah, they are, most of the drains are pretty well maxed out on the maintenance fee. Because he can assess the maintenance fee, but if it goes, if it's like a something that's going to go over the maintenance fee, which a lot of projects, then they have to go through the, the public meeting process, petition. It goes through the whole thing. So very, and usually by the time it gets to that point, the drains are so bad that it, it's pretty obvious that it needs to be fixed. So, you know, some of these drains are 80, 90 years old, clay tiles put in by hand, but a lot of them are replaced with plastic, but they're still a high rate of, uh, failure on some of them, so. I like to, uh, comment, uh, give kudos to our finance director Whitmer for catching that for us. Um, some of you guys might know I've had, I know a lot to do about loans, either actually getting my loans or serving on a, a greenstone board, so. I hate to, to just write a loan off. So I would hope that maybe we could do is sit down with the drain commissioner and maybe kind of restructure that, maybe see what he can do or it's not going to hurt us to attempt to recover that. But I do think that it was intended to be a loan, so. You know, if we can come to an agreement, I don't think we should, you know, I know we got two new commissioners here. They're still rookies out for another month yet, so. You know, dealing with elected officials, they're on the same levels. We're the fiduciary for the elected officials, so we do oversee the finance, but how we run their, their individual offices are up to them and we like to work with all our partners. And, uh, so I think we can work together, come to an agreement maybe and see what happens. That's just kind of the dealmaker in me that it's, you know, I'll probably vote against this one just because I just think maybe not get something or maybe it'll take less, but let's, let's just sit down, see if there's something we can do on it just because it was a commitment made, so. That's my two cents.
That, that sounds like a reasonable course of action to me to, to sit down with the drain commissioner and see what we can do going forward.
So what we could do is if it's, it is voted down, then we can, um, finance director Whitmer and myself will sit down with staff from the, uh, drains office to go over, uh, a new agreement and with signatures, both parties on this, on, on payment terms on this one. So that way it's clear as day and no confusion.
I know it keeps it on the books, makes a little bit, but I think this is maybe the better course to take. If it doesn't come up to anything, it doesn't come up, we're not really, but I think just open up the dialogue.
So if it is voted down, that would be my next step moving forward.
I guess too, my, my other question would be is the general fund, should it be there to bolster the drain revolving fund? I think maybe we did it once in the past years ago, but don't know if that's, uh, if that's something we should be doing with general fund monies. Just a question in my mind, yes.
I don't think that, that's it. Obviously, uh, a question that's exclusive for, uh, the drain commission. It's, uh, it's a question that we ask about so many different, uh, required, services that, that, you know, the county is required to provide through, by the state and we are shorted on funds and providing them. Um, so it, it's not a new need by the county that is, um, not fully provided by the state.
I agree with Commissioner Swainy. It's, it's, it's how we deal with all the elected officials and you know, we've had to make some cuts and some say that we can't do our job because of the cuts, but that's a discussion going forward, so. That's what it is. I do think that that this board tries to work with all our partners and that, um, it's for the good of the county to make sure that all the departments run the best that we can, so. Commissioner?
Rather than taking an up or down vote, I would like to put a motion on the floor that we table this, uh, matter until we've had a chance to, uh, have the drain commissioner come before us at the next, uh, finance finance committee, committee of the whole meeting.
Is that a motion?
It is. I move to table this.
Support.
Well, you got the first motion out there on this one right here.
Right, this this would be voted on before that. Um, the question is if, if we table it, then it's required to come back here.
Next meeting.
At the next meeting. If we don't table this and we just deny it, we can rework the whole thing and take time to, to do it right as opposed to yeah, get it done in two weeks over, over this period.
It's not
It, I'm
going to make a financial impact. It's up because right now we're not, it's not being, it's, it's an open, uh, it's an open, well, it actually could be considered a, a plus, but because we haven't collected on it, there's no terms to collect on it. We're really not losing anything. We just delayed a little bit, so.
Yeah, and I, I would guess that if we're going to collect on it, that there would be, you know, probably a significant dive into how it's going to happen. I don't, I don't think it would be an easy um, repayment from the drain fund.
And maybe the agreement might be that not the total amount or maybe over 10 years, but we're not charging interest on this, so.
Right.
Yeah, so can we vote?
We have to vote on that.
The motion.
Can the table?
Motion to table, so. Okay, any more? Do y'all understand that we're voting on the motion to table? Okay, let's do a roll call vote on this so I know.
Commissioner Swainy?
This is to table, so voting yes is to table. No is to not.
No.
Commissioner Hope? Commissioner Weber?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Commissioner Jalzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Marino?
No.
Commissioner Engler?
Hey, no. So the motion to table is without, we are back to the original motion. Is there any more discussion on that before we vote? So if we vote on this, we will be voting vote against the amendment. It means that we will not, we'll be off the books. We'll be addressing it at a future time. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So see no more discussion. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
What's so?
It's complicated.
I make it, I make it complicated. Blame for everything. Come on.
And just, let me start over. Commissioner Hope?
Yes or no?
Commissioner Weber?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Commissioner Jalzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Marino?
No.
Commissioner Swainy?
No.
Commissioner Engler?
No.
So we have one I, six nays. Motion.
Denied.
Denied, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We had to make an interesting page today, don't we? Okay, that finishes up. Bitter reports. Uh, we have no government affairs reports. Minister Controller, would you like to?
Just, uh, for your upcoming, in, uh, next upcoming finance committee, committee of the whole, we will have departments coming in front of you just to kind of give you a snapshot of fiscal year 25 performance. It won't be a budgetary discussion. It'll be more tailored to like how many calls 911 got and various things than, um, just so that it's, sometimes it gets lost in the budget process. I think it'd be nice to have a separate recap of the fiscal year. Uh, elected officials, uh, are more than welcome to uh, do this as well, but I was not mandating them. I was just making sure that the departments that reported to me come in front of the board and explained, uh, what occurred in fiscal year 25 in their department.
Okay, uh, we have no unfinished business. No new business. Uh, I'd like to open up general public comments. Please, on any topic, uh, please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Okay, the mic's open. I don't see anybody coming. There's nobody online. Okay, at this time I'd like to close general public comment. Uh, commissioners' announcements.
Commissioner Jalzinski? I had a, a discussion today, uh, with a business person in the Shepherd area. And, uh, after the business I had was finished, uh, she had indicated that she lived in a uh, home in Coldwater Lake. And I said, are you part of that assessment district for the sewer? And she made the comment that uh, Coldwater Lake was taken out of the sewer project. So that caught me by surprise. I don't know if that is correct, how that's going to affect the park, uh, but I thought I just mentioned it.
I was at that meeting when they voted it down, so.
But I, I don't think it's quite over with yet with the health department and
The health department, it's not mandated. I don't
No, but a lot of the lots are so small that, you know, time of transfer now, um, there's not enough room on the lot to legally have a drain field 50 feet away from your well. I think there's a new can of worms coming the way it sounds.
Like in person, they got to.
And I think, uh, Wayman is mandated.
Yeah, yep, it is.
So they'll be doing that, so.
Yeah.
So anyways, yeah, they did vote it down. The, the initial estimates to go in there that revised estimates versus so astronomical that maybe come up with a plan to start fixing some of them or coming up with an alternate solution on that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Announcements? See none. I will ask for an adjournment.
No, moved.
Moved.
Moved by Jalzinski, supported by Swainy. I thought we were going to be here for a while. All in favor, second by eye?
Aye.
Both the same. We have ended at 5:46.